Mr. Pearl?
Yeah, we're, um, we have one item on agenda, outreach and at-risk specialist position. I'm gonna go ahead and explain that.
Sure, so that's part of our board personnel subcommittee meeting. And this evening, what we're going to be talking about, and Don will lead that conversation, we have members of the educational services team here. And we're gonna talk about realignment we did with a position in the educational services department, and it's a position called outreach and at-risk specialist. So it's important to understand that we adjusted some other positions in order to create this position because there's important work under the old configuration that we were not able to complete. And we think that by making these changes in this, that we can accomplish things that we could not accomplish before that are very important. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Brodsky, and he'll talk about this position. So, Dr. Brodsky.
Mr. Roberts, good evening. You should have a, in addition to the agenda, you have a handout, two-sided handout with a graphic on the front. And I'd like to take you back a few years very quickly in that, you know, our strategic, I'll take you back to strategic planning.
No, I agree.
And, you know, we took a direction from our stakeholder committee. There were about 75 members of that, and it was comprised of parents and students, staff members, and business and community members. And it was clear from the feedback that we received from that committee that culture was an area of focus, and that was necessary. The culture area of focus as part of our strategic plan was in Chippewa Valley schools, we will enhance our community by embracing and celebrating diversity, connecting students, families, and community. And some of those goals were improving communication, fostering a welcoming atmosphere where community members feel a sense of pride and connection to our district, developing programs to enhance connections between parents and community members and service groups to kind of understand our district and how they can play an active role in our community, researching and planning and implementing professional development opportunities for school staff that increase cultural awareness and student support strategies, and investigating, planning, and expanding programs for all students that ensure opportunities for cultural awareness and positive behavior supports. And we began this process two years ago with the hiring of a diversity consultant, and educational services had the opportunity to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the position. And that experience told us that the role needed to expand, as Mr. Roberts said, beyond the limited role a consultant could provide. That's why our plan is to post an outreach and at-risk specialist, we call it ORs, be an at-will position that will be funded solely through grants and be evaluated on a yearly basis for its effectiveness. The purpose of the position is to provide balanced and appropriate supervision in the development of consistent practices and procedures that support social-emotional learning, student well-being, diversity, cultural competencies, and inclusion throughout the district. The role's also to develop, lead, and facilitate these initiatives through working with steering committees, district and administrative, and building teams as well. We also envision this specialist role to play a vital role in supporting our English learners as well, our students. So the key that this position is intended to ensure appropriate student supports and that district guidelines are communicated and followed. So, in the, as you see on the sheet that I provided to you, there are various areas which we've expanded the ORs position to be able to work with. One of them is elementary and secondary, and in the elementary and secondary schools, the role of the OAR will be to develop and conduct professional learning for teachers and staff, and support staff that actually work directly with student groups, to communicate with stakeholders on all the processes and programs related to that position, and to support the summer school program. They'll also be focusing on social-emotional learning, diversity, cultural competence, and inclusion, and they'll be providing leadership in supporting continuous school improvement goals related to social-emotional learning and student well-being. That will be a, that's one of our priorities, SCL, and it is also going to be a district-wide K-12 goal that we will have when we submit to the state the following year. We're going to be planning this year. Dr. Langlands has a group already together, Social-Emotional Learning Committee, and this person will be a liaison and work with that committee and actually run that committee. They'll also be, have a hand in instituting a vision, mission, and strategic plan for implementation of social-emotional learning and student well-being practices throughout the district, facilitating adult learning related to SCL, trauma-informed practices, character development, evidence-based frameworks associated with SEL, and learning related to cultural competencies, equitable practices, and evidence-based frameworks. They'll also be developing consistent practices and procedures that support cultural diversity, inclusion, and equity throughout the district, and they'll serve as a resource to work cooperatively with all the stakeholders of the district, school community, based upon these strategic goals, our school improvement goals, our programs, and any of our systems related to equitable practices, diversity, and cultural competency. The EL portion, they'll be working with the EL enrollment in the EL program. How many students do we have right now? We have 1,100 students that are English learners, 43 different languages? 43 different languages, and so this is a position that will be, will benefit our outreach and grants position because right now Nicole is working with that particular area, and this person would then be a go-to person as well. Translation services would also be incorporated, staff support and professional development, as well as the summer school for our English language students. This person will also work very closely with the data and assessment coordinator through reporting the WEDA testing data for our community, including placement and parent notifications, and analyzing data and making data-driven decisions to improve student achievement and program effectiveness in our EL program. The specialists will also work with parent groups, developing a system of communication and district stakeholders on processes and programs, and then facilitating, coordinating the parent education network, the Indian education outreach programs, existing district parent groups, community events, and future outreach parent groups. And then they will also be working with the curricular leaders.
I think we hear somebody knocking.
Somebody knocking on the door?
Yeah, that's what we think.
That's a carpenter.
It's a carpenter. Who has a Porsche now?
So finally, they'll be working with the curricular leaders. No, that's okay. In curriculum and development, and developing the capacity for our services, making sure they're equitable across the district, and then the research-based interventions and services for at-risk students and English learners. So you can see this is a multifaceted position that's intended to make sure that district guidelines and student supports are communicated to our school community and are followed by our staff. That concludes my, hopefully, brief presentation. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd like to hear them.
Do you think you're gonna get the grant?
We have the grant, we've already allocated. We should be able to be sustainable with this for a period of time, yes.
And what about the person, do you have a, you must have a likelihood that you're gonna find this person?
I believe we will, yes. We have now posted the position, I wanted to give-
Are you looking internal or external, or both?
We would post the position, and we would look at both internal and external. I believe there's been some interest, but I, until the position has actually been posted, we really haven't spoken about it.
What qualifications are you looking for?
We're looking for actually the posting itself. We're looking for a teaching certificate, K-12 is preferred, a master's degree in education-related field is preferred, five years of successful teaching experience or related experience would be preferred. And then we really, we need someone who's able to communicate verbally and in writing with our community as well as with our, working with our administrators and staff. They're, again, gonna be facilitating adult learners quite a bit, so that person has to be well-versed in working with adults and providing the professional learning for them. So there are qualifications that are necessary. We are looking, though, when it comes to the teaching experience, if there's related experience, we will take that in consideration.
Okay, thank you. And like all these positions, we're looking for amazing people who can do a lot. I just would-
This seems-
It's a lot.
Yeah.
And I just wanna give, for the best of my ability, a little bit of a, kind of a context over time. When we began, we, the strategic planning process, which was 2015, one of the areas, as Don mentioned, was culture. So we kind of shifted some things internally in order to address that. We had a diversity consultant that we hired over time. At the same time we were doing that, all of the requirements on grants were being changed. And it was, and you now know, in our English learner program, it's completely different than what it was in 2015, and the requirements that we must meet are far more stringent. And so now we have, in our schools, we have a number of, I'm not sure how many teaching positions we have, but how many buildings have, at the elementary level, have EL teachers?
We'll have 11 of our twelve buildings will have a teacher there.
Okay, and so 11 of 12 buildings. In secondary, we have EL teachers already, we did have those. So all of these things have been requirements placed on us by the state. So as time has moved on, not only are those requirements have changed, but also reporting requirements have changed. And the function of the role that Nicole Fainer has, has changed over time, making it virtually impossible to give justice to all the things that we are required to do. Nicole absolutely cannot do that. So this is, we've kind of created this, use a modern term, a hybrid position, which addresses the things that came out of strategic planning, but also addresses the things that grew out of requirements, grant requirements that we receive that have changed over time. So that's the reason we've come to this point, evolved to this point, to need a position like that. So we absolutely cannot meet the needs of our staff and students and parents using our current model. So that's how we've arrived here, just to give it a little context.
This is an internal employee, right, not a consultant?
That's correct. Right.
Yes.
Yep.
And is this like a director level? What level is this gonna be? Do you know?
It's a-
It reports in.
Close to a specialist, which would be a little coordinator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little coordinator.
Gotcha.
So.
So I have some questions. Oh, you have?
No, I was asking.
My initial reaction to this is this is an awful lot for one person to do, to be, I mean, that's, I don't even see how one person can do all this and do it effectively. And I'm not suggesting we hire a bunch of people, but this is really, you know, hits upon many areas, and a lot of the areas are, like, we have need, we have a lot of need in every one of these areas. This isn't like something that, oh, I can drive. It's a lot of plates to keep in the air and do it effectively, and you guys know better than me, but I just feel like, yeah, we're gonna do it to meet the criteria that we have to for this state, but are we really doing the best? Is this really the best way to go for the community and district? Because I feel like we're removing some, you know, we, we might have, it's just, I think it's a lot of hats, and I do know all these areas need someone, but I just don't know if one person is enough, in my opinion. I don't know how much the grant can pay for, I don't know anything about it, but I just feel like it may be, we might be doing a disservice to certain areas. But you guys are the experts, but that's my initial reaction to this, is that it just seems a little overwhelming for one job.
I would think that if we are able to take a look at the duties and do some, you know, we're gonna be constantly evaluating the program itself. We may find that there are certain roles, responsibilities, that might be better served from a different perspective as opposed to this person, and that's something that, you know, we're always keeping that in mind, but we also have to understand that, you know, we are limited when it comes to-
I mean, we used to have a coordinator that just did the ELA thing. I mean, it was a lower-level position, but I remember we had one person that just did that, and then we had one person that just did the diversity, and now in curricular leaders, we, I mean, I just, it seems overwhelming to me. My, I'm not opposed to it, I just think maybe we should hire more than one person, but that's just my opinion.
I'll write that down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Scott, sorry. I just-
Wait, wait, don't worry, we don't have a quorum.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum. This is my opinion.
If I may, I think one thing we talked a lot about as a group was the ability of this person to be able to facilitate, and that's the key piece of this, because we recognize how big this position does to other neighbors.
Right, that's true.
So their ability to facilitate within buildings and develop building-level teams that will help address these things.
So really good intrapersonal skills, and someone that can work well with different people in different roles and do an effective job. Good luck. That's what I say to that, that person. No, I think they can.
They need to decide they need more people, they'll come to us.
Well, no, no, guys, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, that's the facilitation thing, that sounds great. I just think-
You know, always in these positions-
A lot of bubbles on there.
They're evolutionary, and I think if you look at most job postings, they can be kind of scary. All job postings, when you list all the things that people do. But I think that over time, as Dr. Brodsky mentioned, duties get shifted and we find a better way to do it. This is how it looks good on paper right now, and as we get in and learn about this and how the person actually does their work, then we'll make adjustments. And we could be back with another way to look at it, but this is kind of where we are right now.
Please forgive me for not-
Yeah, no, no, we love the support. We love the support, and that you understand the importance of this work.
These are all some very important areas that are, and I, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Well, we were being realistic in our expectation at this point. You know, depending on where we're headed in the future and what these duties entail, and they may be more complex than what we can, we will keep you informed of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we will, we will be posting this position tomorrow, I believe, isn't it correct? That was our plan?
That would be-
Right? So, because we need to get this filled for the start of the school year, so that's what we'll be doing.
Okay.
All right?
I'll say.
Good on that.
Okay, then we can go on to the next subcommittee.
Do you want to close that meeting, or?
I'll close the meeting at 6:11, 6:12.
6:12, closing that meeting?
I'll, my four minutes to Mr. Senator.
Oh, my God. I can tell what you, I can tell what you've been watching.
Take as long-
No, you actually got 15 minutes here.
Take as long as you want.
You're giving Mr. Settle in two minutes for his meeting?
We can give you extra time because we don't have a meeting.
There's no meeting. So, Dr. Brodsky?
We're like the Titanic, sinking fast. I'm gonna see if I can start, we're gonna play a violin. Yeah, I think we need to. Unfortunately, I'm afraid we won't have chairs. Oh, is this still on? Okay. Wow, this is a big chamber.
She lives pretty classy. Sure, sure. He is, sure.
Okay, so just an amendment. Quick question, can my TV-
Okay, so, where's Sarah? Do we need her to turn anything off or on?
No, we're good. So Scott, if you went on-
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, I didn't-
You went on, call it, or I'm not sure who's chairperson.
He usually calls it.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna, Sarah, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the building and site subcommittee meeting of Monday, July 11, 2022, to order, and starting at 6:13, we have a couple of items on the agenda. The first item is the change order summary report, and Mike is here from Barton Mallow to explain the change order that we have.
So, good evening, everyone. So taking a look at the June change order summary for construction in the district, we do have some significant items on the change order summary for this particular month. A lot of them are directly related to the Ottawa Elementary Classroom renovations that we're doing due to the influx of students that we will have for 2022 fall. So we will be renovating some classrooms, adding some new classrooms, and some offices for staff there that are required.
How are we getting around to Ottawa?
I think Scott might know-
One more full section. Right now, they are, they're gonna be up, I believe, over 500 kids next year.
Wow, that's crazy.
I know there was a lot of kids on our street, but I didn't know that many. Because Ottawa was going down in enrollment for a while.
Yep.
A lot of people sold their homes and the kids are moving in.
That's good.
My, yeah, we got more next story you don't know about coming in. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So again, yeah, a lot of those are directly related to that, and then also, we did pick up a nice-size credit at Cheyenne Elementary for masonry there. There was a scope of work for the four entrances there to completely redo the entrances due to water getting behind the brick there. But make a real long story short, we were able to salvage a lot of the front and back face walls, and then also use attic stock from the original build at Cheyenne, that a lot of the brick was sitting behind the building, Trades Building over at, by Dakota High School. So we were able to use that existing brick, which saved us a nice chunk of money there, so.
How did the water get behind them?
There's, so there's a metal roof on that school. We are actually investigating that as well, so with this credit, I do have a roofing company coming out. That water is directly running onto those piers right now, which is just, it's bad. So we have to try to divert that water somehow, which we're gonna do. We need to investigate that further, but we're gonna take care of that this summer as well.
All right. What is, what is this Chippewa Valley, what is this letter thing?
So as you know, we're putting new, yeah, new entrances to both athletic fields. So both of the athletic fields will have brand-new entrances going into the stadiums. So there's four masonry piers with decorative gates in between those masonry piers, and then there is a arch letter, Chippewa Valley, sign that's gonna be going there. So at Chippewa Valley particularly, the sign has to be attached to two of the masonry piers, so it becomes a structural measure, if you will. So that particular number is for the structural steel needed to support the sign that's gonna be attached to the masonry piers for wind load.
That's for just the materials part of it?
Materials and labor, yeah.
Oh, and labor?
Yes, yeah.
So is this, all right. No, I didn't even know we were doing that, but yes, thank you for your information. I don't think I've ever seen a bond that we've had as many changes and constant running into like, you know, different things happening at one school. Cheyenne, since the beginning of, I mean, it's just been crazy, how many things, but getting a credit, it's lovely, so.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. All right, does anybody have questions about any of these other things? So the, okay, so the bottom line of this is what?
Yeah, so the bottom line for the contingency is a negative $12,590, and then the two items at the top are general conditions, so the total summary amount is $702.
Oh, okay. So, so what is, so it was the 3.3 million, the starting contingency fund, is that what it is?
That's correct.
And what's remaining is?
Remaining is 1.3 mil, yep, 1.3 million, yes.
The roof on the concession at Dakota, is that, I'm just curious, is that metal or asphalt?
It's asphalt shingle, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we were, we did, did consider a metal, putting a metal roof on there, but with inflation right now and how much, you know, much more expensive material is right now, it'd probably be three times the amount as asphalt shingle.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Scott, are we, is the enrollment over what Ottawa was at the highest point?
Well, I don't know what it was at the highest point.
Because we're spending $27,000 for electrical work to relocate the staff and programs?
So Mike, why don't you explain what you're doing at Ottawa so that we have an idea?
Yeah, so there's, there's an existing staff lounge there right now, Ken. That staff lounge is being changed into a resource room that they need. The, they have a workroom right across the hall, that workroom is becoming the new staff lounge, and then there's two 10-by-10 offices that are being built in the back of the media center to support administration staff there that need offices. So that 27, that $27,000 number is electrical turnkey there, so that's relocation, new drops, new data, drops for data.
Are they making the office larger? Or where are they putting this extra administrative people?
In the back of the media center.
Oh, I, okay, gotcha. All right.
Yeah, so there'll be two offices, metal studs, drywall, paint, doors, electrical, lighting.
And we're building a resource room, is that what you said?
That's correct, yeah.
We didn't have one before, or we need a larger one?
We need another one.
We need an additional resource room.
So what they're doing is they're, I believe they have two resource rooms now. They're taking one of the resource rooms and putting them into this smaller area because there's less kids.
Okay.
They're utilizing the classroom as a actual classroom for grade level.
Oh, for grade level, okay.
Correct.
Do you understand it?
Yes, I got it.
All right, I just wanted to make sure you understood it. All right.
Yeah, also, we're, the Latchkey teacher, the person that runs Latchkey, they're gonna be moved into the stage area. There's a office or a room on the, I'll call it right side of the stage, that they're gonna make an office for her. I'm not sure where she's staged right now, but that's where she'll be going.
Is that storage now, is that what that is?
Yeah, it's like a storage room, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that room back there. Then with Ottawa, one of the things that I've looked out at enrollment, if things rolled forward each year, this is gonna continue for years to come. I think they're gonna now be three sections per grade level, which is, I think, where they used to be years ago.
Wow.
And so-
That's great. But then the north end schools are shrinking, which-
It's the rollercoaster ride, yeah.
Yeah, because they're not turning over yet, you know, I guess. There, like my neighborhood, there's kids moving in.
Oh, good.
You know, young, under, they haven't even started school yet, so that's good, but we're back up to like 11 or 12 kids on my court, so that's, makes me happy. All right, anybody else have any questions?
Okay, and this will come to the next board meeting for approval. And then the second item on the agenda is the scoreboard status. I don't know where exactly we want to go with this discussion. Right now, what we're doing is that we're exploring the scoreboard- Right now, what we're doing is that we're exploring the scoreboards to see if we can purchase the scoreboards through a cooperative. If, if we can find out we can do that, then what we're gonna have to do is only bid the construction side of, of the scoreboards.
You mean under the bond part?
Well, no, the scoreboards will be paid for out of bond, but we'll only bid the actual labor part of the...
Oh, because it's, because it comes through a cooperative, I see.
And from our vantage point, buying from a cooperative means that we can get these scoreboards quicker.
Right.
Now, quicker right now?
Yeah, but still quicker than a one...
Right now, right now, they're telling us that we're a year out to get a Dextronic scoreboard as it sits right now, and that's as of...
Because of the same problem, the chip problem.
It's chips and, and materials.
Yeah, they have hundreds of thousands of cars sitting there made without chips.
So again, what we're hoping is, we can buy it from a cooperative. If we can get it from a cooperative, we can order it a lot earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to bid it out, and then we're looking at not being able to order it for probably about six weeks or so, once we go through the whole bid process.
So there, have you already, do you already know that a cooperative exists for that type of equipment?
Laura has identified a cooperative. Right now, she's making sure that all components are part of that cooperative. So there's different parts of the scoreboard, and we have to make sure that all components are within the cooperative.
What's, what's a cooperative?
A cooperative is a statewide or national purchasing group that buys things, hit larger, because it's a large purchasing organization, you're getting discounts on the equipment.
Okay.
So what's the status of the repair that you...
So the repair, as, as I know, and I don't know, who, oh, Paul, I think gave the update, and Mike.
Yeah, today's a team. So we, we did take a look at that scoreboard. The electrician went into the back of that scoreboard. There are relays for each one of those LEDs that we did clean. Some of the LED, it was, some of it was successful, but not all of it. So there, we, we relieved some of the black lines, but there are still some of the black lines in the board, which there's still conversation between Adam Schell, the AD over at Chippewa Valley, and the scoreboard manufacturer to see if we could potentially, I'll call it limp it through until we decide whether or not we're gonna go with new boards. So that's still in the works.
Well, I mean, we don't really have a choice. We're gonna have to limp it through, right? Somehow we're not, I mean, it may not be fully functional, but we don't have, we're not gonna, we can't get a new scoreboard, so will the AD convey that status to the booster, you know, the booster organization so that they're aware of where we stand with it?
I think they already know.
Okay.
He was here, the booster had, was here last board meeting.
Right.
So I think he knows where we're at.
No, but I mean, after the, after the person came out today, and what the status is after they came out, just, just to keep them in the loop.
So the picture part of it has the black lines or the...
That, that's correct, yep. The LED portion of it.
So it shows scores, but, but the actual, they probably film a game on it?
Yes.
And that's black lines going through it?
Sure, they play replays.
I didn't see it ever working last year when I was there, just the scores.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
And maybe they, maybe they just turn that feature off because it does have the, the lines through it.
We'll let them know.
So what, how soon will we know if the items are available?
A couple of days. Laura said, Laura said she's looking into it today, and we'll, we'll know soon.
And we don't know prices yet.
Uh, we have an idea of what prices are, yeah.
And then what about Dakota's? The board, why don't you check it out?
Dakota, I, I believe, I don't know where they're at, is there a repair for that?
Um, no, no, Dakota's, Dakota's, Dakota's board's not a video board. Chippewa High's is a, is a video board, Dakota's not, so it basically just shows your number and your score.
So you were thinking, or the board was about putting the same ones on both?
Yeah.
So they both have the visual...
Some people suggested that.
Yeah, that's what some of the members of the board suggested.
So, so really what we're going to do is, what we're, once we know the status of the board and the cooperative, then what most likely we'll end up doing is bidding out the labor for both sites. One is an alternate, one is a base, which will be, the base will be Chippewa Valley, and then bring that forward to this committee and/or the full board to decide how we want to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions about any of the change orders or the scoreboard?
I don't. You guys?
Good. All right, then I will close the Building and Site Subcommittee meeting at 6:28, and I guess have a good night.